Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammuss? Oh, he's gone. Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any additions to this evening's agenda, counsel? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda now. We have minutes from the July 14th meeting. We have approval of a liquor license for Casey's General Store, number 1549, and approval of claims in the amount of $623,305.97. We had a request to amend minutes by our city attorney, but is it not necessary?
No.
There was no action taken.
Right.
So that's the not of the minutes.
Right.
Okay. So I would entertain then a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Move by Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, we had put Travis Squires on the agenda for an update on upcoming financing. Some of those issues are still evolving. There isn't a lot of information he really needed to share. Didn't ask him to drive down from Des Moines for this meeting, so we will probably see Travis either the next meeting or our last meeting in August. We'll move on to resolution action items. The first is a resolution declaring intent under Treasury regulation debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures in connection with specified projects. These will be specified projects that we will name as part of our TIF amendment. And again, this is... A second. Melanie, I'm going to ask you if we are actually setting those determinations in this meeting or if this is something that we're setting up for following meeting?
No. This reimbursement resolution is for the South Main 34 bypass, TIF district.
Okay.
Not the...
Not the West Burlington.
Not the West Burlington one. So this resolution basically says although you don't have your TIF bonds all lined up, which Travis will be doing in a couple meetings, it still allows you to pay the contractor for the South Junction Road project that will be paid for TIF. It keeps your TIF bonds from running into some tax issues that I didn't fully understand because I thought Travis was going to be here to explain it, but...
Okay. And that... So the issuing of debt in order to reimburse the city is essentially allowing us to pay those expenses now and then being reimbursed through the TIF?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is specifically related to the South Junction Road paving.
Okay. And do we have a total of what some of those bills may be?
Not with me. Yeah, I don't think they're all with me. No. I don't have the...
Can you tell us what the status of that construction is at this point?
They have the return left as well... So the return, the intersection with Libertyville Road, Libertyville Road, Highway 1 intersection. They have that part left. And then pretty much the sidewalks. So with this project, it's got the complete streets aspect to it, meaning that the road is wider, but then also sidewalks on either side. And with the project, we'll be paving a portion of the loop trail. So the loop trail and the sidewalks is what remains.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. So then entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Move by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Revulinski. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about... Since some of this information is based off of what Travis Squires has to bring to us, that's kind of how it sounded to me, is that we needed to get a little bit more information from him as far as...
No, that really deals with our next resolution, I think. The information that we're waiting on with Travis.
Okay, but we do have projects that we can insert into Section 4 of this resolution?
Yes. So that project would be the projects that are listed in the South Main Urban Renewal District, which included the paving. I believe we include the possibility of sewer extension sewer and water extension to any residential development out there. Were also included in that Urban Renewal District.
So there's approximately three projects that would be tied to this resolution then?
Yes, but really the resolution only applies to funds that are spent before the TIF financing happens. So it really only applies to the Junction Road project because that's the only project that you've got under construction in that Urban Renewal District.
Okay.
So the only purpose of this is that the TIF money comes back to our general fund, in essence?
Yes.
Because it's like before the TIF money's here.
Right.
So we're borrowing it from ourselves.
Yes, but this allows with the tax exempt and collecting the money beyond the original taxes. Like I said, I wish I understood it better, but I thought Travis was going to be here.
I guess the only thing I'm uncomfortable about is that the projects aren't listed here already before we approve it.
Well, now is kind of where I was leaning and with the fact that there is information that you don't completely understand that Travis would if we had any other questions, it might be good to have this discussion.
I can get Travis on the cell phone if you want me to. He told me to.
Here's my concern on the flip side of that is that we had an agreement with the bank to have this road paved by a certain period of time. We're not going to... No one's going to insert projects that we don't approve in this. So there's not any danger of projects getting slipped under the rail.
Well, I'm not concerned with that. It's the temporary borrow that you have to do in order to pay the contractors and then get that money reimbursed back to you at a later date. And how that affects what our finances are currently. And Travis would be the best person to be able to answer those types of questions for us. Because in terms of this resolution, we aren't creating any new money right now. We're looking at an option to be able to borrow money so that we can pay the contractor who paved the road that's out in front of Pilot Grove Savings Bank right now, which is nearly complete, so that they can open for business.
Exactly.
Okay. Once they're open, then the tax revenues start coming in after that.
Yep.
But we still have to understand how much money that is that we have to borrow in order to have it reimbursed back to ourselves. Okay?
Yeah, I understand.
It's... We do have...
The reason I seconded it, I would just say, one thing that it... We're simply declaring our intent to issue debt to reimburse ourselves for this project. We're not saying how much the debt is. We're not saying... But we do know the confines of the project. It's already pre-approved. We've already agreed to what the project will be. So I'm comfortable intending to issue debt to reimburse ourselves for these expenditures.
Joy has just stepped out of the room to see if she can get Travis on the line to see... He offered that, so we'll just see if we can get that list of projects. The other thing too, Darren, is we do have the means to do some short-term borrowing to cover these.
I understand that. I just want to know what the timeframe would be that we could look at getting this temporary borrowing paid back through our TIF.
Well, we have that schedule, though. But that schedule is to be selling bonds in early September. So the timeline would be, say, mid-September for us to pay those back.
We're just looking at a two-month...
Yeah, this is just giving us the authority to proceed without having sold these bonds since we've added other elements to it. We're still getting those all in a row before bringing the whole package to you. So this allows us to do...
To issue the debt prior to receiving it through the TIF bonding. But the timeline should be no more than 60 days.
Okay.
But let's see if Joy will get Travis on.
If she doesn't, if she isn't successful with getting Travis on the line with this, and I'm sure she will be, that kind of satisfies me a little bit, at least, at this point in time.
Yeah.
Because I just don't want to get us into a situation where we've sold bonds expecting that it was going to pay for a contractor and then we wouldn't get the reimbursement back from the TIF money in a timely fashion for whatever reason.
Sure.
You know? And then we're left holding this debt until we start getting that revenue generated back through. So...
Joy, come back in. All right, so let's...
She broke in and then poked out two...
Okay, well, let's just move on to our next resolution until we do hear back from Joy. And that would be simply setting the date of Friday, August 1st, at 10:00 a.m. in City Hall for a consultation to the proposed amendment to Highway 34, West Burlington Urban Renewal. This would be to meet with the taxing authorities to talk about the proposed TIF projects in that area.
Move to approve resolution.
Move by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we will set a public hearing on plans, specifications, and form for contract for the Poole project, and that will be at our next council meeting, August 11th, at 7:00 p.m. And then, Melanie, can you just answer a question up here also on that? As far as receiving bids?
I believe it is the 21st that the bids come in.
It says, yeah.
The... There is a pre-bid meeting on the 11th, so Andrew with Burbach will be down that day for the pre-bid meeting, and then we'll stay and answer any questions you have or the public has during the public hearing on the project. Bids will be received the 21st so that we have a recommendation for the council on...
The 25th?
25th.
Okay, very good. So then entertain a motion to set the public hearing on the plan specifications for the contract. Move by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, Joy, we're waiting.
What Travis didn't answer, but I knew I had gotten something from all ours today. And we need to set the meeting tonight... Or for the date of the meeting will be July 28. And on the resolution, we actually fill in the projects, the fund which they're going to be expended from, the total cost, the amount of borrowing, and the estimated date of completion. So we actually do that ourselves. So that would be, like Melanie said, you know, the paving, the sewer for Casey's, the...
So my suggestion is while the committee and the board reports are happening, I will look on Joy's computer and get that information.
Yeah, and it's underlying that they need to adopt this resolution before or within 60 days after any original expenditures are actually made. So that's why they're wanting us to do it.
Okay.
I can get those answers before the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So next, the...
So do they want to adopt that resolution?
Pardon?
Don't they want to adopt that resolution then?
We're going to wait and...
Oh, until you get it, okay.
She fills in the blanks.
So we're going to still just hold that.
Okay.
All right. And let's see. So we're moving then to approval of the 12th and Burlington sidewalk contract. Melanie?
I set these on the tables in front of you. 12th and Burlington, with the original bid package we put out, we did not receive any bids for that. So we allowed the contractors an extra two weeks to get the project completed, pushing it right to the end of the CTG grant. At that point, we received two bids. The first, or two quotes, competitive quotes. The first was Jed Parker working with Woodruff Construction of Iowa City with a quote of $50,181.60. The other quote was from Wesley Barton Construction of Mount Pleasant for $68,873.40. Again, Woodruff will be working with Parker. The contract documents allow for somebody to sub out more than 50% of the work with approval of the owner. And Daryl and I discussed this and found that this to be a good compromise for a local contractor who's willing to do the work. He just needed some bonding assistance, which is why he is partnering with Woodruff. So we would recommend Woodruff Construction for $50,181.60.
Melanie, it's $20,000 more than the engineer's estimate. I mean, do we have a budget for 50,000? I mean...
Daryl and I discussed this. He's... With the CTG grant, Daryl wants to move forward. And I think the words were he'll find it in his budget to move forward. I don't know if that means that another project will not happen, but you know, this is quote-unquote Kevin, the signature intersection. So we felt like leaving the color-integrated crosswalks. Daryl and I discussed different ways of cutting this project down, but with it being such a well-traveled intersection, then decided to move forward with it as designed.
So what you're saying is that Woodruff won't be performing any of the work on the project?
Yes.
Correct.
Maybe, Daryl, could you come up and talk a little bit about what you're going to cut out of your budget if we're going to spend this extra 20,000?
I haven't got any specifics yet. All of... With the CTG grant, we've been talking about for a couple of different years and stuff. So we got it with SURF. Joy's got the figures and stuff there for... It's like 15,000, I think, for the CTG grant. And 30,000 was out of my budget. 20,000 was out of SURF. And then there were some other... Oh, Hy-Vee was helping with, I think, 19,000.
Yeah.
And we ended up... We had more than what the project was actually because it was... This is his part of the contract. And part of the contract for Ickerson was... How much was that?
Around 40, 45 as well. So you're looking at overall project costs around...
And we had figured, I think, 80,000 per total? So yes, it is more money.
17,000. So again, I'm just trying to visualize or understand where that extra 17 is coming from then. So I mean...
Well, what were those revenue sources again? What did they add up to?
It'd be 30, 20, 19...
15.
And 15.
This isn't the full scope of the project, though. This letting right here is not the entire scope of the project that we're talking about with the monies that you were just adding together right there. You know, the contribution from Hy-Vee goes to the lights. There's... Part of the other grant money goes to other things that are happening in the area. This portion right here was always figured to be about 30 to 35,000 dollars. And now it's coming in at about 15,000 to 17,000 over what that was going to be. So what we're trying to find out or what we're asking is to try to help us identify what or what you feel you're going to cut back on. Are you going to not seal coat a block? Are you not going to, you know, do patching that you thought you were going to be able to do with your own forces out somewhere? Where do you want to try to come up with this extra money so that it makes us a little more at ease with allowing just a small portion of this project, 50% of this project, to actually overrun its budget or what we projected as its budget?
One of my thoughts was, and I talked to Joy about this, was waiting until the last... I'll say the last minute, like in May or something like that, because we talked about getting a hot pot and a crack sealer. That was going to be around $50,000. Seeing how the money comes through out of all that. And that's... Has already been designated out of SURF. That 199,000 was designated out of SURF money for a truck, which we've already purchased, and some other things. So not spending that money until the last to see how the budget's going at that particular time and then seeing where we go. Because right now, I don't have the manpower and stuff to do crack sealing. So waiting till late spring, see how the budget's going then, and see where we can come up with that. But that's the monies that I was thinking about as a last resort.
So you may not buy that piece of equipment at the end of the fiscal year if you have to make up this money at that particular point.
I just don't think that we cannot not do that. Let's crop a gram of it.
You want to take advantage of the fact that there's additional funding outside of your budget to do this and do it now. And you do have things in your budget over the winter that unforeseen, like snow removal.
CTG grant is probably going to go away.
Yeah.
And that money's only going to be available for a short period of time, and that's 15,000. This has been talked about for two years.
Yeah, I think this is a very important community project. You know, no question about it. That intersection is one of the busiest in town. So I think we should definitely find a way to do it. If council wants to find another way to help supplement the project, they can do that, too.
There is a reserve in the road use tax fund balance. At the end of June, it was $232,000. And he can spend that if we just have to amend the budget.
I see.
So there's a reserve.
Okay.
The money's there.
Yeah. That is basically... So I'll move for approval.
I'm not necessarily comfortable with letting it with knowing that Woodruff isn't going to touch the project, but there's going to be another contractor completely on it. To me, that causes some concern that if the only reason that was done was because of bonding, and it's only a $50,000 project, there's question marks as to, in my mind, as to why that would be. So I would not be comfortable with that scenario.
But with Woodruff guaranteeing the bonding, they still will have some oversight with what the project is.
They shouldn't.
I mean, they're going to operate as this gentleman being a subcontractor underneath them, correct?
Yeah.
And any reputable company would have some sort of oversight over top of that subcontractor. I see it all the time in the world that I deal with, and I'm sure you see it.
I do, too. I'm just not comfortable with it.
Is the contract between Woodruff and the city on this?
Yes.
So they're liable for the work?
Yes.
Not comfortable with it.
You're not... I understand her position, and I empathize with it.
Can you elaborate why you feel that's wrong?
I just... There's a reason that specifications are written the way they are, that 50% of the work or, you know, there's always a number that has to be done by whoever's bidding, that you're not just subcontracting all that out. So, you know, to me, you have to ask the question, what's the motivation here to do that? I just... I'm not comfortable with it. So...
You haven't clarified it in my mind. You said there's a reason. What is the reason?
She doesn't know the reason is.
You know, you have a feeling that it's not...
I understand the position that you're in and why you really don't want to state what your actual...
I'm just not comfortable with it. There's always question marks when if a contractor can't get bonded, why can they not get bonded? And this is $50,000 project. That's not much to get bonded for. So that just begs... Or more questions in my mind. And I just... It just is a... For a small project like this, why would a large general contractor be interested in not having any skin in the game, really? But it's just a strange situation. I'm just not comfortable with it.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid from Woodruff Construction?
I'll move to approve.
Move by Hamilton.
Actually, I already made a motion to approve, so I'm second, and that's fine. Yeah.
You had Revulinski...
I'll get in all second.
Second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
No.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. Next council resolution proposing vacating part of North F Street. John, do you want to tell us what the history is here?
Eight years ago, the town was approached by Evergreen Cemetery to vacate a piece of North F Street. And everything flowed pretty smoothly as far as the vacating process. We adopted a... The planning and zoning recommended it. We adopted a, basically, an ordinance vacating it. And for some reason, the transfer never got made to them. There's an additional step that you take after you have a vacated parcel. We just did some of this in the last 12 months with the Methodist Church, if you recall that. What we need to do, and I did a little checking to make sure that there wasn't something that would outdate us on what we've done with our ordinance and so forth. Essentially, we need to do the part of the process after the vacating that authorizes the transfer and the deed from the city to the Cemetery Association. To do that, we have to have a public hearing. We have to give notice that the Cemetery Association will be who we intend to transfer this to. And the agreement back... And we do have some letters and pretty good tracks on this up to the point where it stopped in 2006. The agreement was that Cemetery Association would just absorb this into the cemetery. The street happens to go kind of like a spear right into a piece of the cemetery geography for $1. So we want to set a date sometime, and we probably ought to set it two meetings out so we've got enough time to publish the notice So we've got enough time to publish the notice and make sure that we comply with our statutory requirements. But, and Cemetery Association is just anxious since they have the site plotted now for sites for interment, but they basically are uncomfortable doing something where they don't have title to it. So we don't want anybody sold a grave that can't be buried.
Ain't theirs to sell, so to speak.
All right, thanks, John. So on our, on your agenda, council was suggested August 20, August 11, which is our next meeting. John, you would recommend we go to the 25th?
I think the 25th.
Okay. Entertaining motion then to approve the resolution, which would be for the disposal and transfer of vacated real estate in North Fifth Street, and setting public hearing for August 25th.
North F Street.
F Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Who did I miss that time? Very around.
Okay.
Okay? Joy got it.
Yeah, I got it.
All right. We'll move on to our committee reports, Water and Sewer.
The Water and Sewer Committee met on July 24. We made a couple of recommendations from the committee that needs to be followed up with yet at this time. And I have yet to discuss portions of funds that are being allocated for projects, and how those are generated, and the numbers that were used versus numbers that will be generated from the 12% increase in the water bill that took effect July 1st. Beyond that, we didn't take any action. The council needs to have action with it at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll have a Ways and Means Committee report. John?
Yes. Ways and Means met actually right before the meeting tonight, and we considered four different items. First was a discussion of the use of lost funds. Because certain community groups were, were counting in their budget contributions from the city based on the sale of Logan Apartments in the last fiscal year, we haven't been able to fulfill that commitment. And we have a healthy but balance in our lost fund right now. We ended the fiscal year, Joy, that number again?
$180,000.
$180,000 in that fund. And so the committee moved to recommend to the council to pass a resolution recommending the council to offer $5,000 to Little League, $5,000 to the Soccer Association, and $2,700 to the Police Department, which would reimburse them for the overtime that they, or the special services they provided to Fair Fest. And so that was a total of $12,700, which was recommended to be transferred from the lost fund balance towards those activities. So I.
John, I think the total ended up to be $2,800, up to $2,800.
Oh, up to $2,800, because we weren't exactly sure of the bill, of that amount to the police. So 27 and change, so up to 28, 28 to the police. So that, that was a total of $12,800, and I would, I would make that motion to the council.
Moved by Revolinsky to approve the expenditure of lost funds.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin.
Question?
Yep.
It was part of the discussion with Fair Fest organizers in terms of what their responsibilities were. And at the time, they came to Public Safety Transportation Committee meeting, they agreed to pay for additional law enforcement. So is this, in a sense, us supporting the event?
Yes.
And then flipping it over and paying our law enforcement?
Yes.
It's not us covering their bill for them, it's a roundabout way of us supporting the event.
Right.
Because I know there was, there were some funds that were listed under Logan.
Right. And as a matter of fact, they were, it was, it was, they were led to believe that if we sold Logan, that we would offer them $10,000 to answer a project. So this means that we're giving them $2,700 to answer a project.
I feel good about supporting the event in that way, then. Making sure.
We felt the same way, yes. Good.
Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next discussion we had was regarding holding a referendum to reallocate the use of lost funds. Currently, as a reminder to all of us, 50% is dedicated towards street improvements, and we have eight years left on debt that we took under that, that commitment that lost gave to that. And so that's going to have to continue. However, we also have 25% that's towards the Sewer Department, and then 25% towards community betterment, of which 12 and a half percent is committed towards civic center debt, which will continue for the next four years or so. The suggestion was to no longer, to put it to the electorate, to consider not funding sewer out of lost, to make those funds available for tax relief, or, and, and also in the process, community betterment. And so certainly, there's, there's plenty of ways that, you know, those, those things can get pared down in our, get allocated in our budget, or get actualized, tax relief and our community betterment can actualize. We decided not to make the recommendation to the council because we wanted to wait and discuss with our bonding attorneys on the best language that would be suitable. So we don't want to have a, we're proposing, we didn't actually take a motion on it, but we are, I'm just informing the council, we're going to be checking with our bonding attorneys, and then from there, making a specific recommendation of the language to put on the ballot. And that, that's in our November?
Yeah, this would be an election to change the purpose.
Right.
And I think, you know, there are a couple of questions that we would have, John, for our, for our bonding attorneys about, you know, how to go about that and ballot language. But I know we were probably going to have some deadlines coming up fairly soon if we're going to get something that's on the ballot for the fall election. The other part of the discussion about this was, you know, giving some revenue flexibility to the city budgets going forward as, as, you know, we, as the lost funds would allow us to have. So that nothing, nothing specific, nothing intended, other than giving us a little bit more of that revenue flexibility. So, so no action on that, John, that's for information this evening, and we'll try and get something back as quickly as possible.
John, I was going to say, I think you're probably going to need that information by your August 11 meeting.
Okay.
Because you're deadline.
Yep.
Good. Well, then we'll, we'll make sure that we check with them and meet again sometime before then to make the recommendation to the council at that time. The next item was a little more controversial, and it was requested by our water superintendent, Carl Chandler, to offer a dollar an hour salary increase to seven of his eight employees at the, at the Water Works Department. I would encourage, this, this actually passed, the motion passed. I would personally encourage the council about no on this for two reasons. I'll let someone speak on his behalf who voted for it. One is, it's, it, just the way we ultimately decided, it may create some disparity there because not everyone at the plant would be receiving it, seven out of the eight would. Second of all, I think it's, it's setting a bad precedent to, you know, offer the salary increase outside of the budget time. And also, it was done, also when we looked at the comparables in the survey that the League of Cities had offered to us, we looked at comparable pay scales, pay rate, compensation to similar employees, people with similar job titles, anyway, throughout the state. The range was right there. You know, we, we have a range of people, I think, making 14 plus to 14 something an hour to 23 something an hour. And that was pretty typical of water, waste, you know, water purification experts or personnel around the state. So for all those reasons, I voted no, but if one of the other council people, one of the other committee members wants to speak in favor of the resolution and offer a resolution to, offer a resolution to the council, then that's, feel free.
Well, I'd feel it's unfair to Carl to just sort of frame it that he came because he felt that there were discrepancies across departments within the city, and I think that's, that's why he came. I think he recognizes that his pay scale is on par with other water departments, but felt that within the city, and that's, that's why he came. I just, just so that the council members know.
I, I voted for that because Carl had demonstrated that he had done some savings in his budget through the project that's been currently going on with the dredging of the retention basin outside of the Water Works itself. That amount was approximately $160,000. The increase that is looked at with the dollar an hour for seven employees averaged out to about a $16,000 to $17,000 increase in the salary portion of the budget, including FICA and I-PERS.
Was it a $22,000? I'm sorry.
No, we reduced it back down.
Because we renewed one guy.
It was reduced by the one person, and then reduced it back down to the initial $16,000 that Carl was asking for. This is the same standard that we applied when we did the increase in the Park and Rec Director's salary here at our last meeting. We'd already set the precedence there. We had also had a precedence three years prior with the Library Director increasing the salaries of the employees there through the same type of budget-saving manipulation. So that's, that's why I supported it. I felt that it is Carl's department. He does have the confines of the budget that he applied for and was approved through the Ways and Means and the council for this fiscal year, this money. Even though it goes on from here into the future, this first year would need to be spent through the savings from that project total, and he would have to deal with it with his budget in the upcoming fiscal years from here on. And it would be Carl's responsibility to deal with anybody that would be in his department that would feel that there is something inequitable about the way of dispersing it between seven people rather than eight that he has in his water distribution network out at the plant.
And I'm honestly torn on it because I don't think there's as big a discrepancy as what we had looked at with the Park and Recs Department. And it is outside the budget process, so I did vote yes at the time, but I kind of wish now I would have had a little more time, maybe I would have said more time to think about it. I don't know if I'd change my mind, but I, I just think those are all things to keep in mind. I, I think that, as I said in our meeting, our employees are valuable assets, and we should treat them as such. But, yeah. And as Darren pointed out, we already have set the precedent, so.
Ooh.
That's what I have to say about it, I guess.
So is there a motion to approve?
I would move from the committee that we go ahead with this.
Moved by Hamilton to approve the proposed raise.
So in a couple of months, are we going to get a request from another department for salary adjustments?
I have no way of knowing that.
I know we don't. But I think we have a serious problem here if we keep going down this road.
Does set a precedent, really.
I know, it's been done before, but it makes me very uncomfortable redoing this outside of the regular salary adjustment process that the city has every year.
Is there a second? Okay, seeing no second, the motion fails, and the motion does not pass. Any other?
There was a fourth item I'll just mention. We, we opened the discussion with the Police Department about the salary discrepancies in their department. It's not something we can address immediately, but we are, I think the committee, the Ways and Means Committee is very sympathetic to the issues that the Police Department are facing, especially with, you know, the loss that we see of our police officers after a very short, you know, term of employment to higher-paying departments, even within our own community. And so I think this is really a very important issue. We've just opened that discussion with, with Captain Thomas tonight, and we look forward to opening, continuing that, and then planning properly for our next budget year to really address this. That's all I'll say.
Thank you for your report, John. Personnel Committee, Doug?
Yes. In front of you, you should have a packet from GovHRUSA. This will be the first firm that will be here on August 11 to give us a presentation on their services they would offer for us were we to hire them to do a city administrative search. So the second page you have in front of you is the agenda or the timeline we have for the other two firms. August 25, we'll have Callahan Municipal Consultants, and on September 8, Bringmeyer Firstman LLC. So what I would like to do tonight, if we can, is, I had one company already call me and ask me what we want from them when they get here to give a presentation. And I said, well, I don't know yet because we don't have a list of items for you. So what I would like to do tonight, on this sheet that has the schedule for the firms that will be coming in, let's have just a general discussion of what you want to see from these firms, maybe two or three things from each person, and I'll put those together and send them an email so they will come prepared to give us what we want to see. Answer our questions ahead of time, in other words.
One thing is.
And if you wanted to, we could have formulate a document that would be the same, say, 10 questions for each firm, so we ask them all the same questions.
See, I don't have any really specific questions, I just like to see the personality of each person, each representative who we may be working with, and how they answer. I suppose how they answer certain questions. So do you want to compile this tonight? Do you want us to actually complete our homework assignment from last time?
Well, let's do it tonight, I think it's done. So for instance, you know, two questions I came up with were, you know, do they guarantee their searches? So when I was on the school board, some of the firms offered, if your employee leaves within the first year, we will do another search at no cost. So I think that's a good question for one of them.
Okay. What is, what is your approach to, to researching references?
All right.
I'd be curious about an overall success rate.
All right, that's a good question. What's the average length of time your placement stays?
Or, or.
In their position, for instance?
For first-round search, how, how much the percentage of actually finding someone first round?
All right, I see, that's a different question.
Yeah, it's different.
Well, that's another, I think, good question for them to have ready for us, is how do they find the candidates they bring to them?
Yeah, what is their approach to actual recruiting people who already have positions?
Very important.
Yeah.
Would anybody be so bold as to ask their fee?
Yeah.
Oh, of course. Yeah, I'm sure they're coming with that, and that, you know, they're probably going to.
Well, in other words, you know, one, just one thought on this is, you know, is there like a menu of services you have, or is it just a standard thing? Because, you know, we want the super deluxe version, or we want the, you know?
Well, I think that's a good question to ask them, is, you know, how do you proceed once you're hired to execute the search in a broad sense? And how do you involve stakeholders? How do you identify stakeholders? What process to use to have the candidate meet the stakeholders? You know, every firm like that is going to, is going to have slightly different process. And that's, that's a very important question, I think, because what we're looking for is, I think, most of them are going to bring to us very similar services, and we just have to find a good fit. Will we come up with, like Mike said?
Well, our past, our past experience was, was simply, and I'm sure they have, they had their networks of places to advertise the position or to contact others, and then we would receive resumes. And then the recruiter would actually do the first pass of the evaluation of the resumes and determine who it is we got to look at.
Right.
I'm not sure that served us completely well, maybe it did, but what is their, you know, what is their process for, for narrowing down candidates and why they make certain recommendations? Because we were, you know, we, we, at that point in time, engaged the Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee then got involved with helping to narrow it further, did some initial interviews, and then made a recommendation to the council about final candidates.
Well, and I think there's a big difference, too, between whether it's going to be a person who's going to be the city manager or the city administrator. And I think that's really important, that it's sort of be. Yeah, we're not a, it has to be city administrator because we're not the manager. Because there's a vast difference in those two positions. Well, the manager's a different form of government, which we do not have, so it's a city administrator.
We don't have, and we're not considering.
It would be just city administrator. But, you know, I think sometimes you have to be cautious because the individual can come in and anticipate that they're going to be the city manager.
I see your point, Martha.
And what we are looking for.
Also, there was some discussion about, and maybe we should think among ourselves, how wide of net do we want to, how widely do we want to recruit from? In other words. Yeah, I mean, I, do, well, I mean, how do we feel about it? I mean, on one hand, Iowa people or someone from more local might be, there's a, there's a value to that because there's a certain, whatever, a certain mindset that we have in Iowa, and if you already have that, or if you've already worked in Iowa and you understand Iowa law and, and.
I think that's huge.
Yeah.
Because that was one of the.
This was something you had mentioned, Joy.
The one of the questions I asked when we were hiring Jeff, does it matter if he's from another state? And the surgeon, or the search guy said, oh, no, it doesn't matter at all.
Right. But it did in that case.
It is huge.
Right.
It's huge.
And so.
I would prefer, I mean, I, I wish that we could ask to just have an Iowa, have all the candidates be from Iowa. I think it makes a huge difference.
Experience.
Or experience in Iowa.
Or have had experience.
But that's, but we did narrow that down. You know, you get the opportunity to do that.
Well, yeah.
Right.
But I think upfront, it might help the search, maybe.
But you just may not get as many candidates.
Well, I can put there on the list, ask them to react to that concept. We wanted them to restrict their list of candidates they bring to us as being people with Iowa experience, have them react to that. Will they be able to bring us a good staple of candidates or not? Or is that going to be too narrow in their opinion to do an effective search?
Yeah, be a good way to ask.
Maybe if you have an intelligent enough person, a flexible enough person, some, I think what happens is sometimes people later in the careers, maybe that's it, you know, that you have, you know, you have certain experience that, well, I did it this way here, so that's how I'm going to do it there, and it doesn't really apply here in Iowa. I think that's what we experienced before.
Right.
But maybe someone with not all that experience might not have that problem.
Yeah, the superintendent of recruiting that just took place, I was asked to be a part of a focus group and then later on, part of an interviewing team for the community that didn't necessarily have direct input, but gave recommendation on the people that we interviewed. And I thought it was kind of a healthy process to broaden it a little bit to get some, to get some of that focus group experience from the community as well. We might ask if they routinely do that or not.
Right.
The others, you know, that we had used had not. Obviously, the last one, we engaged our department heads, and, you know, we would, you know, certainly do that again, but beyond that, there might be a community focus group also.
Well, that's one of the things I want to let them know, you know, what is their model for involving stakeholders?
Got it.
And so they can come up here and tell us what that model would be and what it would look like.
Good.
Any other? I mean, I don't know if we've each had two or three, but I think we got a lot of good ideas here, Doug.
We'll have an opportunity for everybody to put some information in and have something to give them back.
Can you take those, and then if anybody has anything additional, we can forward it to Doug? And then Doug, would you make up a list of those 10 points that we get out for our agenda?
I will. I'll do that tomorrow and send it out to you for your review, make sure I didn't get anything wrong. And then you can give me some feedback, and I want to get up into this week so that our first candidate has an opportunity to take a look at this before he comes.
Very good. Thank you, Doug. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we go back to the resolution? Travis just called.
He did.
And Hallie made the motion, Revulinski seconded it. But what we're doing, the only project is the road in front of Pilot Grove, and it's roughly, Travis said 460, but say 500. The sewer for Casey's, we haven't spent any money yet. So it's just that one project that we'll just approve it.
So we put that in the resolution?
To the reimburse. Yeah, that's what I'll fill out when, yeah, it asks on the resolution to fill out the project and...
So we'll complete the motion with the...
Melanie can help me on that, too.
With the road construction item as the reimbursable event.
Right.
Could we amend that to maximum $500,000?
If you want. Travis says he knows it's under that, but if you want to.
Well, just in the resolution, it has an amount that will be borrowed.
I will put the exact amount in the resolution, but...
Okay. But there's a total, and there's an actual, so.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So Doug's recommendation is up to $500,000.
Okay, that's fine.
For the motion, and then you'll fill in the exact amount for the resolution.
Yep.
And just for discussion purposes, the project is the Lincoln and South Junction Road, which is what we discussed, but to reference it back to the urban renewal district, the road project also includes extending the water main, which is listed as a separate project in the urban renewal district. So by saying Lincoln and South Junction Road project, that is covering road construction and water main for that $500,000. Then the last column, estimated date of completion, if you want to say the end of August, that would be fine. Because you should have your TIF in place by then.
Okay.
I'll move as amended.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Final item then is project update. Melanie, do you want to report, or your memo?
I have nothing specific for them. So if there are...
We did receive your memo. We have, we have all of those updates, but if there's anything you'd like to highlight?
No, nothing specific for me.
Any questions based on Melanie's report? All right, we're out of here. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.